...to order.
Yes.
Uh, the invocation tonight will be by Reverend Beth Anderson from the Courthouse Community United Methodist Church.
Let us pray. Almighty God, as we gather tonight, we pray that your will be done. We pray that we will no longer be our own but yours. We confess that we often have our own agenda, our own passions and ideas. We pray that you would use our creativity, our imaginations, our gifts, skills and strengths all for your glory and not our own. We pray that we will give ourselves over to be led by you. Put us to what you will, place us with whom you will. Let us be put to work for you or laid aside for you. Let us be praised or criticized, let us be full, let us be empty, let the work we do not be for us or about us. We pray that we will freely and fully surrender all things to your glory and your service. You tell us that we are loved, that we are yours and that you are with us. In this season of Advent, we remember you came to be Emmanuel with us. Let us remember who we are and whose we are. We belong to you, you are with us and we are here for you. Pour out your Holy Spirit upon all of us gathered here this night and fill us with your power, your presence and your peace that passes all understanding. Lord, let that peace fill us and fill all of our hearts, our lives and every single person here this night. It is in your almighty name that we pray and all God's children said, amen.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we have the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, all present.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have a, uh, a, a motion for the certification of the closed session?
No move.
Second. The vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the informal and formal sessions of November nineteenth, twenty nineteen?
No move.
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, at this point, I am really proud to read a proclamation that honors the future of our great nation. Whereas for over one hundred years, the mission of the Boy Scouts of America has been to build character, develop physical fitness, teach practical skills, promote community service and prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the scout oath and law. Whereas former scouts have become leaders in all fields, including businesses, education and government, and the values that they have learned through scouting have given them the confidence and knowledge to realize their full potential as active and responsible citizens. And whereas since nineteen eleven, the Tidewater Council Boy Scouts of America has, has been responsible for providing the scouting program in the area that now includes southeastern Virginia, including the city of Virginia Beach and northeastern, northeastern North Carolina. Whereas, one of the major objectives in scouting is to develop citizenship through a value-based family youth program focused on community involvement. Whereas scouts routinely provide community service throughout the council, including on behalf of Virginia Beach Schools and community service organizations. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim, December third, twenty nineteen, Boy Scouts Day. Thank you. Right here, the future of America dedicated to service to God. Thank you all very much. God bless you. Love you guys. Take care.
That's nice.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, now at this point, we have something special. Uh, it's, we're going to have Chief Severo come forward and give a, and honor us with the City Hall replica plaque honoring black law enforcement pioneers. Chief Severo.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Leahy, Mr. Styles, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having us. Deputy Chief, come on forward. Uh, in twenty twelve, then Captain Pat Gallagher had an idea, had a vision on how we take the next step to community policing with members of our community. And he did his homework and he, and he, and he brought community members together and what he wanted to show was the first black officers, African-American officers in our city. And he was able to do a lot of historical research. It was not all, um, easy and sometimes it was a little, it was a little difficult around the edges as to who should be on a, on a memoriam and who should not. But I would like you to take a look at these men. These are, are black law enforcement pioneers and the way we look at them, think about this, they are the Tuskegee Airmen of the Virginia Beach Police Department. They were the first ones to, to break barriers, the first ones to do everything they did. And I think the most amazing thing that, that Pat brought out is that while they were, they were doing this service on a daily basis, either Prince of San County or the town of Virginia Beach at the time, um, it was during a time when there still was segregation, when they couldn't use certain public facilities. Yet the next day they would put the uniform on, they would go back out and they would do the service to mankind, which is the virtue of being a cop, and you've heard us talk about that. So, we are extremely proud that you're gonna, um, honor this in the City Hall building. One is going into each precinct and we have one that will be at, um, our community center up on, uh, Baker Road.
Oh, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
If we can, can you turn this?
Yeah, turn it around. Uh, thank you very much. And, and a thank you to all our first responders who make Virginia Beach the safest city of a city our size in this country. Thank you all. God bless you and be safe. Okay, at this point, Madam Clerk, if we can move on to the public hearings. Declaration of sale of excess property. Okay, uh, one point five plus acres at the intersection of Burton Station Road and Tolliver, Tolliver Rose as follows. A ten-twelve Finney Circle, B ten-twenty Finney Circle, C fifty-eight thirty-seven Burton Station Road, D fifty-eight forty-one Burton Station Road, E thirty square feet foot portion private right-of-way known as Finney Circle.
No speakers, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing on that. Next on proposed, uh, property tax exemptions. Okay, I'll read each one. Ninety-nine for the one.
There's no speakers.
African-American Cultural Center. Corner House Property Ventures LLC.
There's no speaker signed up for any of them.
On any of them?
On any of them.
Okay, should I read them all the?
You should.
But you should.
Yeah. Um, and the, the rest of them are Courthouse Area Charity, DC Art Institute of Virginia Beach LLC, DC South University of Virginia, uh, LLC, Eliza Hope Foundation, Free Foundation for Rehabilitation Equipment and Endowment, In-Home Health, I Rock My Scars, the Mills Spa Missions International, PACH LLC, The Red Horse Running Equine Foundation, Sandler Center for the Performing Outs Foundation Incorporated, THSB LLC, Virginia Beach Art Center, Virginia Gentleman Foundation, Victory Innovation Christian Academy, Virginia Sports Hall of Fame. Okay, there were no speakers. Mr. Moss.
I just want to make one comment. I have requested and have received from the staff the IRS filing for each of these. You may also may want to request those and review those prior to the public vote to approve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moss. Okay. All right, onto the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, a move for approval under the consent agenda under ordinances. Item J one, ordinance to transfer three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars within the operating budget of the Tourism Investment Program, Ray Replacement of Vehicles and Heavy Machinery for Beach Operations.
Okay, that's the only one? Okay. And then, uh, the, uh, planning item, uh, open, uh, a public hearing on planning.
Uh, under planning item K one, Gee's Group LLC, Princess Borough Development Company Incorporated, for conditional use permit regarding mini warehouse at one nine six four Fisher Arch, District Seven, Princess Anne. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion anybody?
I would like to just...
Yes, Ms. Henley.
Uh, I just would like to make a couple of comments about the planning items simply because, uh, it did have a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission and throughout the community, but, uh, I, I, uh, do recommend its approval for a number of reasons that I think need to be highlighted. Uh, this has been heard at least twice by the Transition Area ITA Advisory Committee. They've had a lot of discussion to make certain that this was in conformance with the Transition Area Plan and particularly the concerns about flooding in the area. But the, the primary thing to remember here is that all of this is already zoned, B two commercial. And the only reason anything is before us at all is because it's for a conditional use permit. And it is a large facility, uh, it's a, uh, uh, called a mini warehouse, but it's that interior type of, of mini storage now that is so common. But by having a conditional use permit, it allows us to, to improve a lot of things that we could not require if it were done by right, uh, as a, a retail establishment or one of the other things that could be done by right. Uh, among the things is that it has increased, uh, the, uh, area of, uh, impervious surface that only has forty-nine percent of pervia, so it's about at that fifty percent area that we had wanted. Uh, it has a, a, a very unique architectural design which makes it much more rural looking and in conformance with the area. But one of the, uh, and, and I would say that the traffic that's generated by this is extremely low, much lower than it would be if it were a retail, uh, facility. I think it's an average daily trip of a hundred and forty-five vehicles and most of that is with the office which is being, uh, built by right also on the site. But the important thing, one of the really important things is the additional, uh, stormwater, uh, attention that it's getting because of the conditional use permit application. And it's putting in, even though it already has, uh, the required designed, um, stormwater system built, it's doing a BMP which is not really required of it, uh, at this time, which is very large, and it's, uh, uh, increasing the additional stormwater storage by fifty-eight thousand cubic feet. And so when you look at these things that we're getting because it's a conditional use permit, uh, I, I think these are the reasons that, um, uh, I'm, uh, in support and, uh, I, I think it will be a much improved, uh, use over what it would be if it were built just by right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you approve the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, under ordinances J two, do we have speakers on, uh, ordinance to appropriate twenty-six thousand oh seventy-nine, one, uh, uh, one fifty-two from fiscal year eighteen nineteen, school revenue funds and establishment of CIP number one dash oh-two-four. Uh, Lynn Haven Middle School, uh, School Expansion and FY twenty nineteen twenty Capital Improvement Program.
Yes, the first speaker is Stephen Johnston. And after Mr. Johnston is Purvis Blake.
Welcome, Stephen.
Welcome. It's twenty-six million, not twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six million. Yep, yep.
Thank you again for this time to speak. Um, I spoke last, last council meeting, I just want to reinforce some points. The Achievable Dreams Program is a great program. It serves a part of our community that has been neglected and it is needed here in Virginia Beach. My objection is the fact that it is not needed to have, be in its own building. City operates nine other academies, all nine academies are within other high schools. This week, uh, Beverly Anderson from the School Board responded to the email that, that I sent out and she said that the academy kids would be, the Achievable Dreams kids will be taking AP classes at First Colonial High School. That's a recurring cost that's going to be burdened by the taxpayers transporting these kids back and forth. The other thing we, uh, I would like to bring out is that in the background information, this decision for the Achievable Dreams Academy to have their own building was made in October before it was announced that we had a lead contamination problem in the drinking water at many of our schools. I think the final total's going to be at forty-two of our schools, five of which are high schools. I don't know if you saw my post on Sunday where I highlighted a map of all the areas in Virginia Beach that are affected by this lead contamination in the drinking water. There is a small strip right through the middle of the city that if you live there, your children won't go to a school that has lead in the water, everybody else will. Now, in Virginia Beach, like I said last time, we are unders, we are underserved, our schools are underserved. We're about ninety percent capacity. Five, within the last five years, we've lost a thousand students. They're projecting we're going to lose another thousand in the next five years. But that's based on before they discovered that there was lead in the water. Military families are not going to come to Virginia Beach with lead in the school system, water. They're going to go to Chesapeake when they're transferred here. My parents came here nineteen seventy because Virginia Beach has one of the best school systems. We have a great school system, but with the lead in the water, that's going to create a huge problem for people trying to relocate here into Virginia Beach. We have capacity at one of the high schools. At Ocean Lakes High School's currently at seventy-six capacity, seventy-six percent capacity. We could put the Achievable Dreams Academy there, won't have to transport them across the city to take their AP classes because they have AP classes at the high school level. I think it's wrong for us to spend four million dollars this year and another eight million dollars in the year after that for a twelve million dollar addition onto a school that has lead contamination in it already and is scheduled to be replaced. If we're going to be responsible with our money, let's stop it right now and say we need to do better. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Purvis Blake.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of an Achievable Dream. I have worked for an Achievable Dream for eleven years now. Currently, I serve as the Vice President of Academics over all of our campuses, the Newport News campuses, Virginia Beach and Henrico Campus as well. One advantage I have is that I'm, I'm able to see the entire programs effect on all of our students, from kindergarten all the way through adulthood or to infinity and beyond as some of you all may have heard before. Uh, the relationships we build with our students are forever. Uh, I have daily conversations with our current students, our alumni that have graduated the program in college as well, um, and just to figure out how they're doing and hear how they're doing and how the AAD program has benefited them. The challenge, challenges our students face is an uneven playing field. Our students encounter many obstacles and challenges daily. In fact, our selection criteria identify the students who will most benefit from the program, who may not otherwise have access to the kinds of opportunities and resources that an Achievable Dream provides. But here at an Achievable Dream, we choose to invest in those students. And I must also, um, mention that, um, speaking on transportation, an Achievable Dream pays a portion of the transportation bill as well for, for, for our students, um, here in Virginia Beach. With all of those, the students that may not have the play, the level playing field starting out, we still have maintained in Newport News a one hundred percent on-time graduation rate, um, since two thousand and eleven. The future is here for our, Virginia Beach Dreamers in just five short years, they'll be on their way off to college, uh, living, working in the communities or off into the military as well. I'm reminded of a student who began with us in the third grade at Newport News. During his matriculation through the program, he experiences his share of ups and downs. He once even contemplated, contemplated taking his own life. And he shared the story a little later, uh, with us as, as he stood in his bedroom with the pills in his hand, ready to swallow them all, he restarted, he started to recite that Achievable Dream positive affirmations that he said every day from third grade, which said, "I am somebody and Achievable Dream loves me." And he began to believe in himself. At that time, he crushed the pills. He was, he was wanting to take his own life because he wasn't, uh, accepted, uh, into the college of his dreams, but he knew he had to persevere. And so he did that, he prepared, went to a junior college, prepared himself. And now I'm proud to say this, that this one student, not only as a graduate student at the college of his dreams, but he was just re-elected for the second term as the President of the Student Government Association. So, I say all of this to say an Achievable Dream changes his life and it changes many lives on, on a very, uh, on a daily basis. So, I want to thank you all as a look into your face, humbly thank you for having the courage, um, and the, the bravery to invest in our students and let them know that Virginia Beach believes in everyone and they can reach the moon and not just the sky. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
That's all the speakers?
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a statement first.
Oh, yes.
I'm a proud supporter of our public schools, having attended Burton Elementary School, Lynn Haven Middle and First Colonial High. I wouldn't be who I am today and sitting up here in my hometown without the teachers and staff. Teachers and staff today face more difficult, more difficulties today than when I was a kid. Salary wages, overcrowded classrooms and a curriculum that seemed to serve justifications for allocation of resources than for the proper educating of our children. Educating our children is the goal. Achievable Dream is fulfilling that goal. They're fulfilling those shortcomings by tapping into private resources, ensuring that no child or community is left behind. I myself grew up in a historic African-American community of C-Tech. Upon entry at Achievable Dream, one hundred percent of the students qualify for free or reduced lunch. Nine percent of those students live in a guardian-led, that means other than their parents' households. Seventy-eight percent of those students live in a single-parent household like myself who grew up and it was, with siblings of four, my mother raising all four of us. Ninety-eight percent of those African, of those students are African-Americans. Achievable Dream is a public school but with the added partnership of a nonprofit that cooperates the school. The additional funds and staff provided by the nonprofit provide students with extensive opportunities, resources, exposure, character development and college and career preparation and support that they would not otherwise receive. This includes extended learning time, field trips, uniforms and social emotional development that traditional public schools do not typically have the resources to provide. I support Achievable Dream for, for the many reasons I've listed, but one that is extremely important to me and personal is the emotional and social development aspect of it. As an African-American kid growing up in this city, in a single-parent household, my father is incarcerated. I had extraordinary teachers, as I mentioned earlier, who inspired me and supported me tremendously to be who I am today. But if those same teachers face the same issues and concerns and problems today, I don't know if that's possible. It would be more difficult to support a kid like me because there are too many kids like Aaron Rouse growing up here in our city. With that being said, we need Achievable Dream and I'm a proud supporter. Thank you.
I'd like to move for approval.
Okay, I have a second.
And I'd like to say something too.
Oh, yes, we'll have discussion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, open for discussion. Rosemary?
I, I think it's very exciting with the reappropriation of this money that there are going to be six schools that were not slated to get all day kindergarten that will be because of this reversion money. And I was very pleased to serve on the School Board Committee for Achievable Dream. And this is a committee that really struggled with all the different issues that they had to look at. You know, how do you get the kids to school, transportation and where do you put this next generation of children that are coming up? And they, they turned that rock every which way to figure out the best, best alternative. And I, I truly believe that they found the best one. And they also had promised to deliver a certain amount of children to voluntarily sign up for this. They over exceeded that numbers too. So, we're so fortunate that they have chosen to be in our school system and to work with our children and, and I hope we don't have, your story was amazing, and I hope that we don't have children that get that far down. But fortunately, they had something within to pull themselves back up. And that's what Achievable Dream does for our children, so I'm very happy to support it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Moss?
I'd like to make a substitute motion to decide and be deferred until a larger, December seventeenth meeting. This is more, is it December the tenth? That's a workshop, right?
No. No, it's a full meeting.
Oh, full meeting? Sorry, correction. On the tenth. I think people need to, this is more than about the CIP project. The School Board has consistently under-executed their budget in the tens of millions of dollars each year. That's last year, not counting new revenues from the Fed and not counting unanticipated real estate revenues, they under-executed their budget by nineteen million dollars. They budgeted twelve million, they, but they executed twelve million dollars less on salaries. There's a long list of things, but consistently they have under-executed payroll, but not under-executed benefits, which means they are budgeting for a higher level of salaries than they are paying. Well, that represents a lot of excess revenue that they took, that they didn't spend during the year. Now, we hear issues about schools that aren't properly maintained, they need maintenance. Well, why during the course of the year, because they know they're under-executing on a quarterly basis, are we not taking those funds and putting those towards the needs of the school system? So let's just take a look at the things we haven't talked about. Three million dollars for interactive whiteboard replacements. Now, I'm sure that that's a nice thing. I've talked to a lot of teachers about would they rather have smaller classrooms or have some maintenance done on their building for those whiteboards? There's replacement for white fleet, half a million dollars, but yet at the meetings when we have these joint sessions of the School Board, they talk about how far behind they are on maintaining their schools properly. But none of this money that they under-executed to the tune of nineteen million or the unanticipated revenues from new sources is going towards building maintenance. So I think there are some hard questions and tonight there wasn't anyone from the School Board to even talk about why we should approve this. Isn't that amazing? I guess they assume we're just gonna say yes, but you would think at least someone would be here to talk to, Mr. Mayor would talk to us about a twenty-six million dollars because this is money they didn't spend, it comes back to the taxpayers. We have a lot of priorities in the community. Is whiteboard more important than keeping the houses flooded in Windsor Woods? Probably not. So, we should be look, so I think the School Board needs to come back and tell us of all the things they tell us they have underfunded and have shortfalls, why aren't they funding any of those things with this money? Maybe there's a good reason, but they haven't shared it. So I'm not necessarily against giving them the money back, but I think they need to explain to us how this is the best reapplication. Dream Academy aside is a separate issue because that's a separate CIP and we could approve that tonight and that reversion, and that's a small amount of the money of the twenty-six million. But this other money, there needs to be a little bit more, I think, dialogue between us and the School Board. And I think, other people have mentioned, I think we need a new policy going forward as to how this reversion process works. And I think we ought to have another discussion with the School Board. It could be the Mayor and Vice Mayor, the Superintendent or how they want to do it by a committee, but I think we need to know how does this let's match up with what they just told us at the joint session of what their top priority was, with school maintenance and school construction. So the Dream Academy would fit in with new construction and we could approve that CIP tonight, but these other issues are big deal, are really important. And I remember when we moved and built the, uh, Gifted Center on Honey Grove Avenue there, I, between those two streets because of Ergona Elementary was such in terrible shape. But you know, we moved the sixth graders from Bayside Middle School into that school, they're still there, but we haven't spent any more money on renovating that building and they've been there for years. So, I think these are questions before we reapply this twenty-six million dollars, which is about equivalent to five cents of real estate tax, maybe a little less, maybe four point seven, that we ought to really have the School Board come and discuss and share with us how this lines up with their long-term vision and the things they just told us less than a month ago was their highest priority because this does not reflect that. highest priority, because this does not reflect that.
Okay, Barbara, then Jess.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
And then Aaron.
To, to second the motion to just give us a chance to discuss this, because we ran out of time in informal session today. Because I think when we talk with the school board, they talk about us really needing billions to plan for modernizing the schools and so forth. And I really think we have to find out what the plan is and what the priorities are. We can look at this $26 million and piecemeal it and say, well, you know, each of these things is very good and, and no doubt about it, but it's $26 million. I mean, it, it looks like now a elementary school replacement is about 30 million, so we're talking almost a, a full replacement of an elementary school just in this year's reversion money. I think it's something we need to talk about, and I, I was concerned about adding another CIP project. You know, we would be building this additional school plant portion at, at a total cost of 13 million. And, you know, I, I think we really have to make sure that's our top priority when we're going to do it. I hate for us to just do it as one part of one other major thing. I think we really need to talk with the schools about their long-range plan, particularly with the CIP, and, and if we're really going to be able to fund these things, we need to, to talk about it and see what the overall plan is and what our priorities are and make sure we're all on the same page. It's certainly more than, than just the achievable dreams, that's $4 million, with another $8,700,000 to come with the sale of the Lingfor Elementary School. So it's really 13 million. But is that the really best place? Or when I look at things like the Renaissance Academy being only utilized, I think it's got 68% unutilized area. I mean, is that an area that we could use rather than starting another building project? I just have a lot of questions, and I would like the opportunity to discuss it with the school board.
Okay, Jess, and then Aaron.
I wanted to just take a moment and talk about, I realize this is a vote, is bigger picture than just the achievable dream, but Achievable Dream came down to speak with us today, and I think it's worth mentioning. We often talk about when the private sector can't, government can. Tends to be the kind of mantra of what government does, we try to do what the private sector can't. Achievable Dream does what government cannot do. They have infused themselves in a community that has been disadvantaged, and they have done what we could not do. They have achieved graduation rates, they have achieved success, they have achieved building the social and the confidence and character in these kids to make them amazing, functional, productive adults, a part of our community. But they've also done more, additional things when it comes to our teachers. Teacher, people who teach at Achievable, teachers that teach at Achievable Dream make more money than teachers that teach in the public school system, because they are given additional resources to be more successful in their classrooms. And I think that that's a really important part of what they're doing for our community, and we should be doing everything we can to help them achieve those goals. Because teachers are overworked, and I think we can all agree on that. I think everybody who knows a teacher knows that that teacher goes home and does their work, gets up early in the morning and does their work, goes to school and does their work, and then thinks about it, dreams about it, and worries about each kid they interact with on a, on a daily basis. So I'm not opposed to a deferral to discuss more, because I think that learning about Achievable Dream would make us a better council and it would help us make better decisions, because this is just the first in a lot of decisions that are about to come. I also like the idea that John mentioned about maybe sectioning that out tonight and approving that portion of the CIP. I do agree there are a lot of questions about this vote as a bigger picture, but I, I can, I can be amenable to a deferral, but I also like the idea of maybe approving the Achievable Dream portion of this tonight and moving to talk about the rest of it at a later date.
Okay, Aaron.
I'll say our, with all due respect to our school board members, they who are elected officials as well, school board is not without their problems and issues. Heck, our council is not without our problems and issues as well. But I have a question for this body and everyone in this room. Why is the most vulnerable of our society made to carry the heaviest of burdens? We are talking about educating the most vulnerable, deprived members of our city and our society. You have Achievable Dream who's been able to do that. But yet, when we sit up here and, and talking about taking that next step, that right step, that moral step, we tend to have all the questions of fear and anxiety in the world. John, I agree with a lot of your sentiments with our school board and how the reversion funds are used, but we're building that relationship going forward and, and coming up with formula sharing funds to really figure out how do we efficiently and proficiently allocate funds to the school board. But tonight, we are talking about Achievable Dream.
I don't have a second.
We are, okay, and, and that is some, excuse me, I have the floor. And that is something that I think all of us should keep in mind. Another question I would have for this body, why is the most vulnerable of our society, and they have, with Achievable Dream, why are they made to pay their way in transportation to and from school? Why is that? The most vulnerable, coming from homes that, single-parent homes, other guardians' homes, finding meals, homelessness. You guys can't imagine the things these kids go through. Why is it that an organization is going to help us out and invest emotionally in the character and the social development of our kids? Why are they made to pay to, to transport these kids from these, these communities, impoverished communities to schools? That's something we should ask ourselves as well. The most vulnerable of our society is carrying the heaviest of burden, and not just speaking about education, there are other sections of our community to look at as well, but tonight, we're talking about Achievable Dream. I yield my time.
Uh, thank you. Lewis, and then Barbara.
Mr. Leahy, do you know, in reading the write-up on this, it says it's projected that the total cost is $12,750,000. The, the balance of the money over and above the $4 million would be $8,700,000. That would be provided by revenue from the sale of property, Virginia Beach Public Schools is currently working, city's economic development department to sell. The property's appraised for 12 million, and, but we don't have a contract. They don't have a contract to sell it, do they?
No, sir. To my knowledge, we do not.
That's, the concern I have is, I'd just like an explanation from the school board as to if, if in fact, they're not able to sell this property that they're talking about selling for $12 million, as to how they're going to make up that $12 million to end up funding the, the building of the school. I'm not opposed to building the school. I just want to know where the money's coming from. And so I don't want to lead people to believe we're doing something that we may not do. And so that's what's concerning me about this.
Councilman, I don't know the answer to that. Perhaps Jonathan Hobbs does. I know that Farrell Hansucker was here earlier, but I don't know if he could get into the room.
He cannot get into the building. That's what I was bringing a note up to the city manager to let him know they're outside the building. I think they've actually left. But I'm trying to get ahold of him on my phone, but cannot reach him. So, and to answer your question, I do not believe there is a contract presently for that property.
Okay, so you don't have the extra $8,750,000.
They would be able to be responsive to that, but I do not believe that they have a contract.
That's why they should be here tonight. That's what it comes down to.
Okay, Barbara, then John, and then Rosemary, and then Michael.
I'm just so sorry that this is being made, a, a question of whether Achievable Dreams is a good program or not. I think we can all say that it is. But this is the first time that we have considered, you know, this, this idea of building the separate school for it, and, and then getting into other, these other concerns, such as, okay, this is 4 million, but where's the rest of it going to come from? I think it's something we really need to know. But I also am concerned that we make sure that this program is available to all of the students in the city. I, I see somewhere, I think it's in the annual report that we got, that by expanding it beyond one or two schools, as it is now, C-TAC, I believe, and the Lynn Haven Middle School, then it would make it then available for up to 23 of the school zone areas, which is very good. Is there a way that we can make it available to children in all of the school, in, in the whole city? I, I think if this is, if the program is that good, we should make sure that it is available to as many students as we should, and if it's a public school program, it should be available to everyone. That's a lot of my question. I mean, I, I think it's great that the program has, has done so well so quickly and has been so successful, but I really think we want to make sure we're, we're looking at the long range and doing the very best we can. And, and I think we also have to make sure that we're, we're not just funding one portion of this and not funding the whole thing, if in fact, we do just stick with this adding a wing to Lynn Haven Middle School. And then those children will have to get over to the high school for some parts of it and so forth, so it does raise the transportation question. But if these children aren't able to ride the school buses, I thought everybody was eligible for riding our school buses. I think there's just a lot of things with this program is this good that we want to talk about and make sure we are answering these concerns. And I really don't know that another week would give us all of those answers, but at least would allow us to put those questions on the table and, and have it understood. It's not a question of whether this is a good program or not, but if it is such a good program, we want to make it the best it can be, and I would want it to be available to everybody in the city.
Okay, John.
I just want to read what the actual advertised motion is about. And it isn't just about Achievable Dream Academy, and it's not an evaluation, or if it's good, better, and different. It just says, "An ordinance to appropriate $26,79,152 from the FY1819 school reversion funds," meaning they executed less money than was appropriated, "and establish a CIP project number 1-024, Lynn Haven Middle School Expansion in the current CIP program." And then within here, it gives all this itemization, which you heard Councilman Joe talk about, the $4 million for the Achievable Dream Academy, but it is not the full amount. That's all this vote is about tonight, and it's about whether or not this council can meet its fiduciary duties and responsibilities to the public for $26 million to make sure that these are the right set of properties, of priorities, and is executable and doesn't set false expectations. Now, could we have an amendment that said, "We're appropriating this particular project subject to the release of funds where the school board has the other money?" So it's built into the motion, so they have a, I guess, because they, a right to draw on the bank, but they can't draw on the bank until they deposit the other money to fully fund the project, so we're not setting off, that's a possible amendment that we could make. But these, but there are questions, is even that the right choice? Is that the right answer? And I think all we're asking for is the opportunity to make sure for the public that when we have a lot of schools that are under capacity, are they, is it such that that capacity really isn't usable? It's like trying to get the last 2% of fat out of ham, it's not possible. So therefore, it looks like they have space, but they really don't, and that's, that's easily doable? But we should know that answer. You know, a good program is not a waiver from good analysis and understanding and smart judgment. That, that's not an exception to the good resource, resources. And kids today get buses. We take people in cabs to, to maintain their same school when they get displaced or become homeless, and we've seen what that bill is, or they get flooded out. So people are not being denied transportation to a school. It's needed, we, the school board would have to give them credit. It costs a lot of money, you might, you might saw those numbers, it was, and the $800,000, I think, was just for getting people around from Matthews. So we're not denying people transportation to the school of their choice that, that they have to go to. So I want people to walk away thinking that's not happening. But I do think we need to make sure we understand that this is an ordinance that of which Lynn Haven Middle School is just a, well, 20, less than 25% of the amount we're talking about. So people shouldn't be confused. This is about $26 million to give back to the school board, where they have provided, I think, insufficient justification, and we've had no opportunity to have interaction with them to get them to explain that amount of money, and that is a lot of money.
Rosemary, and then Michael.
I just would like to remind people that when we did the budget last year, we asked the school board to fund six schools for full-day kindergarten, which was almost $5 million, and that's included in here. That's something we asked them to do. So that's $5 million, then they've got $7.3 million to go to school renovation and replacement projects, which are CIP, and then almost $6 million to a revenue fund to cover shortfalls. So that's close to 18 million of the 26. Now, yes, there's another 8 million that's in other things, but the lion, more than the lion's share is in those things. I just wanted to remind people that 5 million is what we asked them to spend with our budget last year.
Michael?
Well, I'm not inclined to support a deferral on the basis that I've had a chance to do my own research and due diligence on this request, which we knew was coming. We've also had, in the last 90 days, two joint meetings with the school board, and we've had every opportunity to raise the concerns that have been raised here with the members of the school board, who were duly elected by the citizens of Virginia Beach in election. I think that our community spoke very clearly with a request to implement full-day kindergarten across every school in our, in our, in Virginia Beach. And this request would, it would implement that, as well as other, what I consider to be very reasonable requests, such as interactive whiteboards, which, which are more than a want. I think that they're a reflection of the evolution of our education system and implementing new technologies. Two-way radios, which is critical for school security, which is of principal importance to, to staff, to students, and to our community, and, and many other things as well. And the, the topic of Achievable Dream Academy is one that I think is really largely without debate, but for, for all the reasons that I, that I mentioned, including that I consider that we've had every opportunity to do our own due diligence and research on these issues. And, and I'm not comfortable delaying any longer the implementation of full-day kindergarten, the enhanced security, and, and other things, because education in our young people is our first and best investment, and I'm prepared to vote in the affirmative today.
Okay, John.
In the year when this council raised real estate taxes for full-day kindergarten, do you know how much they under-executed their budget in the year we imposed that tax? About $19 million. So to say they didn't even need the tax increase, because that first year was only $2 million and some change, and we raised taxes to raise $6 million in revenue, each and every subsequent year, and I provided you all that information in those columns if you look through there, the school board has consistently under-executed their budget, meaning they spent less than we appropriated, less than the funding formula, by about at least $15 million every year. You can go and look at salaries, they didn't hire the teachers, they didn't pay them, you can look through there. You can look at the years where we gave them reversion funds, in the same category that we gave them reversion funds, they under-executed the budget by the amount of the reversion fund dedication. So my only point is, I don't think they understand, because this is the problem of funding formulas, as I've mentioned several times, it's like an entitlement. So, and I'm sure when this budget ends this year, they're going to have under-executed their budget again. Probably not 26 million, because about 7 million, that was unanticipated revenues. So to say that not getting this reversion fund, which they want to use for next year's budget, for the most part, if you've read through the details, I'm sure you have, they're going to end up again, and that's what the pattern shows, so there isn't any sense of urgency. Now, I raised a lot of questions of the school board, and I think it's unusual that if I was asking $26 million from another body, I wouldn't be sending a staff member here as the chairman of the school board, I'd be here, you know, and be talking to us. So to say we've had plenty of time to ask questions, it, I have asked a lot of questions, and based on that analysis, I know that they have dollars, because they're going to under-execute this year, they don't need the money for those purposes, because they're going to under-execute again. So they ought to be recouping that money during the year of execution and So, they ought to be recouping that money during the year of execution, and we should be looking at this money to address the larger capital requirements of the school system. I didn't get answers to those questions, because this is how they set their priorities. And yes, they are elected, and they set their stuff, but guess what? This money now belongs to us under the law of the Commonwealth. That money reverts back to the city. So, now we are writing a check, and some people are going to be comfortable saying they think this is the right check to write for the right purposes. I'm just saying, my analysis, which everyone's subject to their own view, doesn't bear out, and I'll remember all this when we get the ending fund balance next year and we see those numbers, because you'll see them again, and we'll realize that in fact, we are subsidizing by writing this check bad fiscal management. They are over-budgeting.
Anybody else? Sabrina.
You know, I am not inclined to defer this action. I agree with Councilmember Berlucchi. We meet with the school board, and we've met with them a couple of times already. You know, these issues, concerns, were not addressed at any time. Most often, times when we do meet them, meet with them, we don't even address those specific concerns that I hear tonight, and so I'm not inclined to delay it. Also, I'm not comfortable with asking where the school board is and, so to speak, throwing them under the bus. I don't think that's fair, and I don't think that we should do that. I don't think as a body, we should allow something like that to happen. They're not here. There's a reason why they're not here. One of the staff members that came couldn't get in. So, I think we have to be fair in our assessment, you know, when we talk about them, because they are an elected body like we are. And so, the other part of it is, you know, we need to move forward with, you know, and execute what we have here as the ordinance. There are specific reasons for the reversion funds, that they have to use those funds for, and we know what those reasons are, and so I'm not inclined to delay the process.
Okay, is there any other comments?
Did someone second John's motion to defer? I did. I just wanted to make sure. I certainly don't see where one week is going to be a problem to just answer questions, so I'm second in the motion, and I'll be supporting that.
Okay, so we have...
So, we need to vote on the motion to defer.
Okay, okay, this motion will be to defer. For what, it's for one week.
December 10th.
Okay.
I have a vote of 6 to 5. You have deferred this item until December 10th.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am, just to make a statement, the reason, primary reason for my vote to defer was because of the difficulty of the school board representative to make it here, which was entirely beyond his abilities to do it. They were here, they would have been here, had that, I might have voted a different way, but I just think it's, it is not, unless someone could present evidence that it's going to harm the process, that we should defer in order to give that opportunity to be heard.
Right. Jessica.
I presume we'll be able to have discussion, we'll be able to make time in our agenda next week to have discussion before the, before our vote.
Correct.
And can we, Tom, arrange that a representative from Achievable Dream come as well to be able to present their business case as well? Because I really do think we would all benefit from understanding that program and all that it does for our community.
Okay, Barbara, then Erin.
I'll be glad to submit written questions between now and then, so we can get them answered next Tuesday. Maybe that'd be a good idea for all of us.
Yes, Erin, please.
I think, you know, and I want to speak quite frankly, this is one of the issues with this council in deferring things. When we have ample opportunity, we met twice with the school board, no one spoke up and had all the questions we had tonight. When it came to, I'm speaking, Ms. Henley, when it came to reversion funds and things like that, we are talking about the investment in our kids' future. Now, everyone has gripes with the economic side of things, which is understandable, great because it's tremendous amount of money. And the school board is not without flaws. Yes, they are imperfect, as well as we are. There are many issues where we can, make sure we can go back and be proficient in governing. That's one of the main issues with government, is being proficient in governing accordingly. But they are an elected body. We are an elected body. And to sit here and to defer actions in a maneuver that says, because you didn't have, you have extra questions, to me, it's one of the things that's hindered the process of our city for decades. And I did not run for council, I did not sit on the seat, I was not elected to sit here and defer. I was elected to lead and make decisions. And understanding it's only a week was great, but this, to me, is just a pattern of other issues that has happened before on this council. And so, while we will defer this, and that's the will of the council, and I respect that will, I am not at all inclined to support that, and my word to the council would be, we have been elected to make decisions and lead tough decisions. Everybody's not going to be happy. If you're uncomfortable about making a tough decision, maybe you should think about doing something else, but this is where we are.
Thank you, John, and then what?
Last time I checked, we are elected to represent the people and lead in the direction which they tell us. And, but I respect, everyone has their own view of what they think you accomplish here, and I guess, I've been on the end of minority votes many times, so I understand how that can be frustrating. But the same token, ultimately, we have a public trust to make sure of the fiduciary exercise and the best and most efficient use of the public's money that we confiscate. They don't volunteer it, understandably, but we take it. And if we're taking someone's money through the chorus of power of the state, we certainly should be very deliberative in how that process works. And so, moving a week isn't being indecisive. I wish there's sometimes we would have taken more time, maybe we wouldn't have made some bad decisions, but it's not. I just take exception to your view, but I respect the fact that that is your view, but I will, I don't take deferring things lightly, but we didn't have all this detail before we went to that joint meeting with the school board. I have talked with some school board members, I've watched their meetings on TV, and I think that that's what we're here for, a check and balance on the allocation of resources, because every dollar we put here, we don't put somewhere else, and then they come back and say, "Won't you please raise taxes for constructing buildings when we pushed this money, we could maybe avoided a tax increase if we'd put this money in a different place." So, I think that's the big picture, that I think Mrs. Henley and Councilwoman Jones were talking about. It is more than just 26 million bucks, and I regret that we didn't have a workshop with the school board just on this reversion, and for the future, I hope that's a lesson that we've learned, that probably we should have such a meeting, and it's only focused on discussing this and not the five-year forecast, which was that joint meeting, wasn't about reversion funds, wasn't about any of those things, it was just about the five-year forecast and their expressed concerns about needing more money for capital school construction, but it was not a detailed discussion. So, I respect your view, Mr. Ralph, I just hold a different one.
Okay, yes, and if we could do that, then...
I think, I think we disagreed on a lot, but always, you know, admire and respect exactly where you came from as well. But here's the thing, if you're so concerned about school board, maybe you should be on the school board, because the way they issue and allocate their funds, they are elected officials, they are responsible to the constituents as well. Now, our fiduciary concern is at the utmost importance of council as well. But tonight, we were talking about reversion funds, and we were specifically talking about how the school board was going to use those funds as is outlined here in our ordinances. So, to go back and say, well, the school board has all these issues, they aren't doing this, they aren't doing that, that's a school board issue that they have to deal with as elected officials on their behalf. Tonight, our job was to look at how they were going to use this 26 million dollars of reversion funds. And again, we didn't do that. We decided to look at the bigger issue that's concerning the school board and trying to tell them how to govern on their side to, and actually overlook what we were supposed to do tonight. The focus was on this 26 million dollars.
Okay, yeah, Sabrina.
I just want to say that, you know, if we're going to defer, which we've done, that we make sure that we keep in line and focus and address this issue during that deferment, because oftentimes, we will defer measures as a tactic, and the follow-up is not done, and we just deferred it just because. And I don't want to see that happen here. I think if we're going to defer it and say we're going to talk about it, please let's do that, and then go ahead and execute and do our job like we're supposed to.
Yes, we will. And we'll have ample opportunity for the school board to address, you know, the concerns going forward. It's a one-week deferral, and we will have this resolved next week. Okay, at this point, we have no appointments, Mr. Vice Mayor. Okay, any unfinished business?
I have that one item that I mentioned, we couldn't get to in the informal session because of time. This deals with the memo we got from the city manager on December 3rd, which I believe is today. This is regarding the Cavalier Hotel Complex. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read this. What concerns me, number one, I remember when this issue came through, we said there would be no public money expended, other than that design engineering money. Well, if you read through the timeline of this letter, back in July of 2018, that's over a year ago, the city completed its 90% design, right? So, we provided this to PHR Goldkey, AKA Bruce Thompson, and we submitted, and they came back and returned that to us annotated on November 2018, and then in April of 2019, the city approved its own design as annotated by PHR. So, now, remember, these are engineering designs, construction design, due diligence should have been done. So, lo and behold, they start executing the actual design that the city did 90% of, was reviewed, so we're now accountable for the design. So, now it turns out, as we're implementing the approved city-engineered design that they did themselves, well, apparently, our design wasn't very good, because the design didn't account for these issues. These issues that weren't accounted for in that design are now costing the taxpayers 379,500 dollars, almost 400,000 dollars from an error in a design that we did. And now we're saying, because that's now, now we are making a taxpayer payment, which was not our intent, to implement the design of the developer who was supposed to pay everything. So, my only point here is, I'm sure they knew this before December 3rd. I'm sure the city manager might have known this in November, but this is a big mistake. And I'm hoping we're going to get an explanation how that big mistake was made. For 400,000 dollars, the taxpayers have a right to know how a 90% design didn't account for the items in this letter. And I want that, I want that, I think the council deserves that answer, so does the public, because this is a very controversial project. You are correct. And this council made a commitment that we didn't want to spend any public money at all to implement it. And now, because of the design we did and adopted and approved, we are now having to pay 400,000 dollars that we otherwise not had approved, and I think we deserve an answer.
Okay. Any other business? Okay, and new business? Okay, we will adjourn, and we will go into open-mic night.